On the city’s website, other individuals in the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting, as well there is a reminder to turn off your electronic devices. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda this morning?
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there are several. Item 4.1, Rachel Braywaite from Barton Village BIA has withdrawn her request for today. Added is item 4.2, Brian G. Buckle and Richard Moll of the 13th Battalion Akmar Heritage Trust is here to speak to item 8.2 today. And added item 4.3, Jennifer Douglas, who is part of the Young Family, also respecting the Akmar estate, to speak today. Sorry about that. Private and confidential, it says on the changes, item 12.1, that’s typo, it is actually item 12.5, an update respecting a personnel matter, and that would be pursuant to subsections B, subsection B of the municipal act. And Counselor Whitehead would also like to move up item 8.2 respecting Akmar on the agenda to be heard after item 6.3.
Counselor Whitehead, on that issue?
I got a speaking event in my ward at 11:30, so I have to leave. And Akmar obviously is important, it’s in Ward 8. There is two delegations, so it, to me, is a natural that once the delegation speaks to Akmar, that we move the report up and deal with the report immediately.
It’s been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Carries, thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moved by Conley, seconded by Johnson. All those in favor? Carries, thank you. Any declarations of interest this morning? Hearing none, then I need a motion to move the minutes from April the 6th. Moved by Whitehead, seconded by Skelly, all those in favor? That carries, thank you. And then I need a motion to move the May 17 minutes as presented, moved by Marula, seconded by Farr, all those in favor? Carries, thank you. As noted, 4.1 has withdrawn their delegation request, and then I have requests on 4.2 from Brian Buckle and Richard Moll from 13th Battalion Akmar Heritage Trust, respecting 8.2 on the status of that delegation. Motion to approve, moved by Pearson, seconded by Conley, all those in favor? Thank you. And then on 4.3, Jennifer Douglas, respecting the same 8.2, moved by Partridge, seconded by Pearson, all those in favor? That carries, thank you. 5.1 is the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board Liaison Committee minutes from May 9th. Comments or discussion on that? Hearing none, then I need a motion, Pearson and Counselor Farr on 5.1.
Just on that, there was a really momentous occasion this week with the school board, specifically the school board as it relates to this district, and we’ve now put to rest the potential closure of Hess, and there’s talk now in the McDonald precinct with the school board, and a successful vote at the school board trustees’ meeting this week with respect to the McDonald site and making it a community hub. And I thought it would be appropriate, when I saw this on the agenda, to maybe informally at this point, or provide direction to the appropriate staff from the facilities committee, to invite the appropriate folks from the school board to a future GIC to maybe just give us a Coles Notes version, or a Community Hub 101 delegation, so we can be better informed, because the City of Hamilton was mentioned in the motion as a potential partner. So I’m not sure through you or the clerk whether I need to do a motion, or just maybe...
Can we do staff direction, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Okay. So noted by staff, and then on 5.1, no further comments on that? Moved and seconded, all those in favor? That carries, thank you. Moving on to public delegations, Shelley Falconer is first on the agenda, President/CEO of the Art Gallery of Hamilton, and I will ask Shelley to come down to the podium at this point in time, if Shelley is here. Madam Clerk?
Through, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Shelley is not in attendance as of yet, so if you’d like to move on to the next one, that would be great.
Certainly we can do that. 6.2 then, Brian Buckle and Richard Moll are here. Mr. Buckle? Welcome back. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and members of the General Interest Committee, friends of Akmar, and of course our community supporters that are in attendance. I thank you for this opportunity to address you again today. Forgive me while I read from some prepared statements. The 13th Battalion Akmar Heritage Trust has been working very hard, and has been extremely busy, and I’m excited to announce that our Board of Directors has been established, and that our, and is now in place, and that we have formally filled our incorporation. We continue to work, working towards the development of our business plan, which will now be governed and created by the Master Business Administration Program of McMaster University to assist us. We also continue to develop strong links with post-secondary and other institutions. Most recently, we have received a very positive response from Niagara College. I’m also grateful to my staff officer for granting me 24 hours’ leave so that I could be here today for this, for this meeting. Yesterday, I sent the mayor and all the councilors an email updating them on the most recent project, progress achieved by the 13th Battalion Akmar Heritage Trust, and I would like to read this document in part. The trust has been, we continue working towards developing our business plan, which will, as I said earlier, will be generated by the Master of Business Administration Program at McMaster University. With regards to fundraising, we have identified some key benefactors and are in the process of interviewing a professional fundraising advisory firm in order to put together a plan for a much broader fundraising strategy to include private families, companies, and other philanthropic organizations and institutions. We are committed to raising sufficient funds for the restoration and preservation of Akmar without the use of taxpayer dollars. The trust has received tremendous public support for our project, and that support has grown much stronger in the ensuing months. We request that you will, that you will move a motion to continue to negotiate. Set, or feeling, or perhaps communicating that they’ve been squeezed out of a process, they now have nine months within this extension to come up with potentially a competing bid that would rival all of the different benefits that are being put forward by the RHLI. So I appreciate that, I’m in full support of the extension, and appreciate the fact that we’re going to, you know, continue to work towards keeping Akmar in public hands, because I really would not be comfortable with it going private, and being outside of the control of the residents, and having no access to the citizens here in Hamilton. So I’m in full support, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Eisenberger?
Thank you, and I appreciate the effort of the RHLI and all those that are participating in, as Counselor Green said, keeping this in public hands. What I did read in the report, though, is a consideration, and this is kind of consistent with Counselor Green’s direction, that this may, may very well require a partnership with RHLI and others, and I note that it mentions that there was some interest in a Montessori school, restaurant bar, banquet facility, you know, a number of other expressions of interest that have been made that I would hope would be considered as part of maybe a potential package. So, consistent with what Counselor Green was talking about, I would hope that door is open for others to step, step forward and say, “We would like to participate,” not necessarily take over, but, but participate in making this a successful venture, not, in partnership with the city and RHLI. So is that, is that door open, and did I read the report right? It said other considerations that subsequent to June of 2016, others have expressed some interest, but nothing has been followed up on.
Ray?
So through the chair, the council direction was, is that we would do some kind of deal with a not-for-profit organization, not for a for-profit. Those organizations, I’m not sure about the, the Montessori status in terms of whether it’s not-for-profit or not, but those organizations, for the most part, have been for-profit. And so while we’ve, we’ve been approached by them, we have not entered into, into any formal dialogue with them with regards to the opportunity. Nevertheless, they may form part of an RHLI or other not-for-profit operational plan, as they may have been incorporated similarly in a plan that, say, city staff had, had presented to council in the past. So it’s not inconsistent with, with work that they’re doing, and, and our discussions with the RHLI have been that if they wanted to, or if they needed some support from some of these other groups, we can certainly make the connection, and allow them to try and work that into their business plan to make it a more viable proposition.
Okay, thank you for that, and I would assume that the city is an active participant in, in, in those discussions on a regular basis. I mean, I, I have great faith in the RHLI, and I know some of the, some of the proponents that are, that are backing this, but I would hope that the city be a facilitator for those kinds of discussions. Is that ongoing?
Through the chair, they, we have not had that sort of facilitated dialogue, but that is the process that would occur. The city would be at the table if, of making any of those sorts of arrangements, because ultimately they’d have to be tied into some kind of operating plan or lease arrangement.
Okay, so, so hearing that, that we’re going to stay engaged and hopefully work towards partnerships, I think that’s wonderful, and I think the RHLI has shown their commitment, and I think that’s great as well. So if there is opportunity for others to kind of build on this, I think that it’d be very helpful. So I support the recommendation and look forward to next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Just a clarification, we did have a roundtable with a lot of nonprofits and interests, there was, and our Q, I think, went out, there was a number of, of these organizations were at the table, they were, and submitted proposals, and I can tell you that the desire was there, but certainly didn’t meet any of the thresholds. So clearly, there wasn’t any winners through that process, and then, of course, the RHLI came in here and made their presentation, and council endorsed that process. I think RHLI, they’re obviously here, they are establishing partnerships with the neighborhood as well. I don’t see it precluding and being not facilitated by our staff. If there are greater opportunities to fill any void in their business case, it only makes sense that they take that opportunity. So I certainly, hopefully, they are listening and, and embark on those possibilities where they may have weaknesses in their, their own file. So thank you.
Okay, so back to Counselor Skelly then with the motion. Are you attaching a date to that, counselor? In terms of when it will come back?
I believe it is nine months in March, at the next, at the first GIC.
But we don’t have the date yet.
I will put the specific date in, but it would be March, yes.
Okay, so on the direction, then, motion to receive the report and extend the timelines to the date that was referenced. Moved by Skelly, seconded by Whitehead, all those in favor? That carries, thank you. Now we’ll move back to the delegation from Shelley Falconer. Shelley is now present. Shelley? I will welcome her to the podium to speak to the Art Gallery of Hamilton’s strategic plan update.
Good morning. I’m Maria. How are you?
Good morning.
And to start, yep, if you could just please introduce the delegation, and the floor is yours.
Good morning. Good morning, Deputy Mayor, Mayor Eisenberger, and members of council. My name is Lou Chelly. I’m the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Art Gallery of Hamilton, and Shelley Falconer, President and CEO of the AGHNI, are delighted to have this opportunity to be here today. I’ve served on the AGH Board of Directors for 10 years, six as Vice Chair, and the last two as Chair of the Board, and I’ve been privileged to watch our gallery grow and develop. The last time we made a presentation before you, three years ago, Louise Don Pierre was President and CPO, and the topic was a proposed expansion out towards Main Street and including Commonwealth Square. I’d like to take a moment to close the loop on that vision. As the gallery moved forward, it became clear that an expansion was not in the financial best interests of our gallery. Not only was there an enormous capital fundraising task, but the upkeep on the new property was not financially feasible. And so the board decided we needed to be fiscally prudent and focus on strengthening the gallery’s financial foundation before visioning the future. For the past 18 months, the Board of Directors has been working with Shelley and her team to develop a new strategic plan with one principal goal, to ensure long-term sustainability for our gallery. It was 103 years ago this month, in June 1914, that the Art Gallery of Hamilton opened its doors with the exhibition of works given to the City of Hamilton by the family of Hamilton-born artist William Blair Bruce. In fact, it was this gift that established Art Gallery of Hamilton. Since then, the gallery has built a permanent collection of more than 10,000 works of art, and that is regarded as one of the finest in Canada. It is a collection which we continue to hold in trust for the people of Hamilton and for the people of Canada. It has taken a lot of people, past and present, to build the Art Gallery of Hamilton into this great, vital, and creative hub, and center of lifelong learning that it is today. After Louise announced her retirement in 2014, we entered into an extensive search process to find our next President and CEO, who, as the AGH entered its second century, would continue the momentum and build a great art museum for the people of Hamilton and for the region. Happily, that search led to the appointment of Shelley Falconer in December of 2014, and now gives me great pleasure to welcome Shelley Falconer, President and CEO of the Art Gallery of Hamilton. Shelley?
Thank you, Lou. Deputy Mayor, your worship, members of council, I am delighted to be here today. As Lou just reminded us, building a great museum of art for this city and region has been a long-term goal for the AGH. And as we began last year’s rigorous planning process and subsequent consultations, to develop this three-year plan that you have before you, we asked ourselves one very important question. What role will the Art Gallery of Hamilton play in the city, given the enormous growth and transformation predicted over the next 10 to 20 years? As you know only too well, the City of Hamilton is one of the fastest-growing economies in Ontario, and we are your largest art museum in the city and the region. Not only will the population grow, but it will be more diverse and skilled. Now, we know that the mark of a great art museum is the strength and quality of its collections, its exhibitions, and its programs, and you all know what that looks like. Think of the Louvre in Paris, the Metropolitan Museum in New York, the Tate in London. But quality, diversity, and community engagement are not mutually exclusive. I believe that together they’re in fact what make and create a great art museum. So back again to that question, what role are we going to play in this new emerging Hamilton? Well, we know, as you know, that the cultural industries stimulate a wide range of economic benefits. From urban renewal to tourism, we provide many direct and indirect economic benefits. Just last year, in 2016, the total impact of the AGH to the city was over $12.5 million. And I mention these facts not to justify us on economic terms, but to underline the fact that we are simply more than a building or repository of works of art. And here’s the important link to the city. Yes, Hamilton is growing, but without a strong sense of identity, we risk failure. Hamilton’s growth will create opportunities, but it will also create challenges, and we don’t have the advantages of several centuries of deep-seated sense of identity here. And how do you create identity? Often through the imagination of artists, writers, musicians, visual artists, performers, because artists explore through the very nature of their work, society, where we’ve come from, who we are, and where we might go. Real art is about three important things. It’s about experiences, it’s about feelings and ideas. And you know that this city has one of the most vibrant cultural ecosystems in the country. The Tom Thompson behind me, which is from the Permanent Collection, it’s in fact one of the finest in this country. There are very few large Tom Thompson canvases. It’s from 1915-16, and it’s called Birch Growth. This is an example of what I’m talking about. We’re quite fortunate to have this work. Thompson and the group of seven, they truly understood the power of art, and the land to mobilize a strong sense of identity. In fact, they really were our first madmen. They were incredible branders of Canada. The next slide is of someone from our own backyard. He’s probably one of Canada’s most famous contemporary artists, is also in the Permanent Collection, Ed Bertinski. He’s from the region, from St. Catherine’s, lived in Hamilton for many years. He challenged us to rethink our relationship to the environment. This is a close-up, in fact, of one of the scrap metal plants here in Hamilton. So his, his work, and Thompson’s work, and others, and certainly all the works we have in our collection, help to define and challenge our sense of identity, and it also strengthens our sense of the past and the present. We believe that a vital artistic presence here in Hamilton and southwestern Ontario will be crucial to establishing a strong and well-articulated self-image, one that we can all share in. But to accomplish this, the AGH, we must give greater access if we’re to play an important role in this new emerging Hamilton. Last year, and some of the slides behind you should show some of the images of our programs, we began implementation of the new 2016 strategic plan. More than 255,000 people visited the AGH. We produced over 80 exhibitions and programs. We partnered with 44 community organizations in the region to deliver compelling programming. We added 345 new works to the Permanent Collection. In fact, Ed Bertinski’s work, who you saw before, donated to the AGH, one of the largest collections he’s ever donated in the country, but he donated it here. 10,000 schoolchildren visited the gallery on school trips, and our loyal volunteers have donated in this community over 6,000 hours. I am deeply proud to say that the AGH is considered one of the top six museums in this country, and that’s an important fact to remember. We are not parochial gallery. It’s very unusual in Canada to have a gallery outside of a major urban center that has a collection and programming of this quality. These important initiatives have been the result, and made possible, due to the extraordinary efforts of the AGH staff, the Board of Directors, the Council of Governors, and our volunteers. I would especially like to thank Counselor Maria Pearson, who serves on the AGH Board, and has given us incredible commitment and wise counsel over the years. I’d also like to thank you, the city, you’ve been our partner since 1914, for your continued support of the gallery. I’m so looking forward to working with all of you to create a great museum of art. As we continue the strategic planning process, and the very important community consultations this year, to find out what Hamiltonians want from their gallery, we ask you to also share your thoughts with us. Once again, I’d like to thank you for your continued support, and I look forward to seeing each and every one of you over a cool drink on June 27th at our opening right across the street. Thank you.
Very good.
Shelley and Lou, thanks for the presentation. We continue to see terrific things at the Art Gallery across the street, and of course we are very well represented by Counselor Pearson on the board. Questions or comments for Lou and/or Shelley? Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and Shelley and Lou, thank you very, very much. Great presentation, and certainly what you’re reiterating today to my council colleagues, number one, first and foremost, go over and see what is over there, because it’s absolutely stupendous. We are very, very fortunate to have the donors that have donated phenomenal works of art to the city over the years, that, that are, that the city owns, and we should be very, very proud of that. Shelley, I’m, I’m going to ask a question to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Shelley, you didn’t mention the Inuit art. You didn’t mention about the Inuit art and the, the works that we, that we recently received.
Yes, one of the probably most important acquisitions that just occurred from a phenomenally generous donor this past year, a donor right here in Hamilton, was the purchase of the Chodok Collection, which many of you will know as the Hamilton Sanatorium Collection of Inuit art. It was purchased from HHS and donated to the Art Gallery of Hamilton. It’s a very important collection, of course, because this is, was the hospital, of course, that took care of patients with tuberculosis. What I didn’t know when I first arrived, and many of us didn’t know, is the Hamilton Sanatorium was indeed the largest intake hospital for the people of the North in Canada. Its ethno-history is extraordinarily important. As Chris Murray up there knows, I’ve had conversations with him about the history here in Hamilton is very important, and we would want to honor that history, and certainly that exhibition is, is going to be opening on the 27th, as we work very closely with the Inuit community to understand the importance of that collection.
Thank you. I’m so glad that I mentioned it, because I think it’s very important information, and certainly a worthwhile collection to see. Thank you again. And Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I could just say, this is a perfect picture at the end. I am proud to be the council representative on the Art Gallery and have been since 2003, and I can tell you that, you know, my day started as, as appreciating art, not only with wonderful art teachers that I had in elementary school, middle school, and high school, but in middle school, I was just around the corner at Dalewood with one of the art gallery facilities that was on foresight. I spent many, 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 a lunch hour at that facility, and certainly appreciate when I go over to the Art Gallery here across the street, seeing the same works that I saw when I was growing up. So we are really fortunate to have this jewel in the city, and certainly know that they’ll be around for another 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I really appreciate the presentation today, and certainly remember my trips to the Art Gallery, as I’m sure every Hamiltonian does. And I just wanted to comment, Mr. Deputy Mayor, on the access. Like, I really feel what you’ve created over there is more than just paintings on a wall. I know your programming with activities and events in particular, your expansion to James Street anchoring that building, which was one of the first, I think, shifts, or one of the many shifts on that street, but certainly a significant one in that building. You speak about certainly expanding the view and the diversity, and having works be reflected. And I know, in my own anecdotal experience, I do see some diversity in terms of the works that are presented. But you had a slide up there that talked about your, your three main focuses as being Canadian, contemporary, and European. What shifts have you made to go maybe outside of a European context, to add a greater reflection of the community here, so when kids can go in, they might be able to have the chance to see people who might look like them?
Okay, go ahead. That’s a wonderful question, and in fact, it’s one of the first changes we did make. Really, the European should say international, and that word is probably a more reflection of the older canon that the gallery used to use. And in fact, we are going more international. One of the big changes we made last year, which is new for the Art Gallery of Hamilton, was we expanded the Canadian mandate to include Indigenous. And it’s one of the reasons we were able to bring in the Inuit collection, as well as other First Nations collections and exhibitions, like the Haida Show that just closed. And you will be seeing a lot more international art in the collection and our programming.
I certainly appreciate that. I know in my own experience traveling the halls there, I certainly saw it reflected. I just, I was a little bit concerned in your strategic plan, that you hadn’t just gone ahead and changed that, and just made it maybe a little bit more international in scope, so when you, when you came before us through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and asked for the feedback, that’s what was noted, and I think, you know, in fairness, has been a knock on the Art Gallery in previous years, that it maybe has not reflected in its totality the experience of the, of the Canadian experience and the diversity that’s here. So I appreciate you taking that note back, and hope to see perhaps in future strategic plans, that language change a little bit to kind of reflect the present-day realities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Skelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, and thank you, Lou and Shelley, for your presentation. I, I’m really proud to have the collection in this Art Gallery in the city, and I think that Hamiltonians should celebrate it, really celebrate it. I’m not sure we realize and recognize the scope of the collection that we have within our city. It is truly amazing. And one of the slides touched upon it, but you also have a film festival, the World Film Festival, that has grown since, since its inception. I was fortunate enough, it not only celebrates works of, of art from around the world, films from around the world, but also some homegrown talent. A few years ago, you brought in a young man by the name of Jonathan Sobel, and I had the opportunity to interview him, and he had directed, written, and produced for under, I think he said it was under $2 million, a movie starring Harvey Keitel, and it was phenomenal, and it’s called The Beginner’s Guide to Endings. Phenomenal movie, which I would not have known anything about had you not brought him to Hamilton. So for, for the work of art, and also for the film festival, I really do thank you, and recognize that it has grown, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no further questions or comments from members of council. I need a motion then to receive the presentation from Lou and Shelley, moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Mayor Eisenberger, all those in favor? That carries, thank you. Thank you again for your presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to 7.1. 7.1 presentation from Mr. Zagarik, who will come down to the podium and speak to committee about the new municipal flexibility for vacant use rebates. Councillor Marula?
Yes.
Everybody's getting a head start on this. Mike, the floor's yours whenever you're ready.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The presentation I'm about to take you through is simply a summary of the staff report that's before you. So again, I'll just be hitting the high points and providing a summary of the report that is before you. So why we're here today is to discuss the vacant unit rebate program. And that's a program that provides a tax rebate to property owners who have vacancies in commercial industrial buildings. And this program, unlike the next program, is an application-based program. So recipients put forward an application. The application deadline typically is the end of February of the following year, and I'll speak to the number of recipients typically that receive or were eligible for the rebate program. Just a bit of a summary in terms of the terms of the program. It is eligible for commercial properties, industrial properties as a whole that were vacant for a minimum of 90 consecutive days. In terms of those commercial industrial properties, if they have delineated or physically separated property, those units within the larger footprint is also, are also eligible for the rebate. With respect to the next program, the vacant excess land subclasses are taxed at a discount rate. So the first program is actually a budgeted program. We budget approximately $2.5 million for the rebate program. The second program is a discounted tax rate, so it represents foregone revenue. And I just want to highlight the differences between the two programs, as you would have seen them presented differently through the budget process typically on annual basis. So with respect to the vacant and excess land subclasses, these are properties that A) may not be required by a property owner. So it could be excess land, so for example, a shopping mall that has parking facilities but has adjacent or shouldering property that is in excess of what's required to support the business. That would be considered, for instance, excess land. And I'll speak to the discount for those properties. So again, there's two parts to the conversation. The first is the vacant property, the second part, or sorry, vacant unit, the second part is the vacant and excess land. So current policy, the current City of Hamilton tax policy for the programs are as follows. Vacant unit rebates, vacant unit rebate is 30% of the property taxes. So again, for those commercial industrial properties who are deemed eligible, who were vacant for a greater than 90 days in a calendar year, would be eligible for 30% rebate of their annual property taxes. And what does that represent for the City of Hamilton as a whole, as in terms of budget or foregone revenue, represents about $2.5 million in terms of municipal property taxes. Over and above that is the education portion, and that represents an additional $1 million. And again, that is a potential benefit to the province depending on how council wishes to proceed with respect to the flexibility that's being provided. Vacant and excess land discount, the vacant and excess land discount varies according to the classes. As it relates to commercial excess class, it's a 30% reduction or discount. With respect to commercial vacant class, there's currently no reduction. With respect to industrial excess class, again, a 30% reduction. And with respect to the industrial vacant class, a 30% reduction. So again, these are reductions. This is foregone revenue for the City of Hamilton, approximately $3 million annually. And again, over and above the municipal portion or contribution is the education, which represents an additional $1 million. So just in terms of where we are today and where municipalities have been with respect to these tax policies, previous to 1998, the Business Occupancy Tax, or BOT, was levied against tenants. So again, not against property owners, but against tenants of commercial industrial properties. In 1998, when the province brought forward a number of tax reforms, the Business Occupancy Tax was eliminated, and the vacant unit rebate was subsequently created. And it was created partially to offset the shifting of tax burden from the tenants to the property owners. Soon after that, as early as 2005, City Council, City of Hamilton Council, put forward a resolution to the province recognizing that there were opportunities to derive some efficiencies as it relates to the program and put forward a resolution asking that the Ministry of Finance to limit the rebate to one year. So again, that was as early as 2005. In 2010, through the Hamilton Economic Summit, a number of stakeholders brought forward concerns with respect to the rebate program. So again, these are our commercial industrial stakeholders who asked City Council to consider, again, a request and a resolution to the province to reconsider the program. So in 2010, council sent, again, a request to the Ministry of Finance and recognizing in terms of the 2005 request, there was no consideration by the province to amend the program. In 2010, council took a different position and simply asked for flexibility to consider amending the program, giving municipalities flexibility. In 2005, when the province conducted a consultation with respect to the Municipal Act, you may recall, this was one of those items that City Council put forward a resolution on with respect to the review of the Municipal Act. And City Council at that time asked that the province once again provide flexibility to municipalities. So not a prescribed solution for all municipalities, but allowing municipalities the flexibility to develop a local solution as it relates to the rebate program. And you may recall when we had Hamilton Day in the City of Toronto, we met with the Minister of Finance, and this was one of our discussion points in 2016, was once again requesting flexibility with respect to the vacant unit rebate and the vacant excess vacant land. So again, council did put forward a resolution in 2015 asking for flexibility. So in consultation with municipalities and relative to the Municipal Act review, the province has provided that flexibility that we sought and other municipalities sought with respect to this program. And starting in 2017, the province is again providing that flexibility as it relates to the application of these two programs. The process that the province requires includes a community engagement process and approval of program changes by the council. You may recall, we put forward a report recommending that engagement process. We completed that engagement process. You'll see in the report a number of correspondences from local stakeholders, and that forms part of our report 7.12U. What it also requires, it doesn't identify in the slide, is that the minister must approve any changes by the municipalities. So again, that is a requirement. Hence, the reference to the July 1 date in the third bullet on this slide, program details must be submitted to the province by July 1. The minister will be approving all of the proposed changes by municipalities, again, subject to how municipal councils choose to proceed or not proceed with respect to the programs. Again, the vacant unit rebate has cost, and you'll see a breakdown, I believe, on page five of 10 of the reports. In the case of the City of Hamilton, our experience has been over the period of 2011 to 2015, the budgets for the vacant unit rebates represented just short of $12 million over that period. In total, approximately 515 properties applied for the rebate program in 2015. And what I would describe as frequent flyers, approximately 55% of those properties, or about 292 properties, have received this rebate for four more consecutive years. So again, the intent of the program is to provide relief around business cycles or challenges in terms of economic situations, but what we're finding is approximately 55% of the recipients, again, are frequent flyers in that they've received for four more consecutive years the rebate program. Council and business community have expressed interest with respect to options, and one of those options are a time limit. And you'll see that as an alternative in the staff report, the recommendation is an elimination of the vacant unit rebates. And as it relates to the excess and vacant land, it's further consultation and review and reporting back in 2018. Some commercial properties, including shopping centers, are assessed by NPAC using the income approach. And why am I raising NPAC's assessment approach? Is what you're going to see through this slide is that over and above the vacant unit rebate, commercial properties in terms of their assessment already capture some consideration as it relates to vacancy. And I'll take you through how NPAC does that. NPAC determines the gross or potential gross income for commercial properties and adjusts it for typical vacancy expense allowance to arrive in effective gross income. So again, NPAC takes the lease terms for properties, that's the potential, and based on normal course of business and normal experiences for those properties, they adjust according to their experience. So if they have vacancies, they adjust that potential gross income for that vacancy experience. And that's how they arrive in part at the effective gross income. So again, just pointing out over and above the vacancy rebate, those properties do receive recognition in terms of vacancies. And again, the allowance reduces the gross potential gross income to reflect vacancies. So again, just for the purpose of benefiting committee with additional information in terms of vacancy relief, in part, it's provided through the assessed values. Vacant units, so this is some of the feedback and some of the comments that staff are providing with respect to the program. Vacant units have a negative effect on initiatives to build and nurture healthy business districts, and in part, this is feedback that we're receiving through stakeholders, including BIAs. And this was feedback that was received back in 2010 as well, I should highlight. Properties with extended vacancies affect their surroundings in terms of increased insurance costs, mortgage financing, and enforcement of property standards, health and safety regulations. Again, this is what we've heard recently, but council heard in 2010 as well. Property assessment is already reduced to account for vacancy rates, and that was my previous slide, with respect to assessment. And in terms of the consultation, the city engaged the community through media releases, direct contact with special interest groups such as the BIAs and community planning teams. We've also consulted, we've reached out to the chambers as well. I've reached out personally through emails to the chambers. The feedback is generally split between the elimination of the program as well as time limits. So again, in the correspondences that are attached to the report, you'll see that, again, some, for instance, BIAs are favoring the elimination. One BIA in particular, I think it was Ann Castor, made reference to two options, elimination and time limit, and I believe that one, and it might have been Dundas, favored time limits. But again, you're seeing in terms of the feedback is, we're not seeing support for status quo, we're seeing support for either the elimination or time limits of the program. Other comments include allocation of possible savings to support business growth, to assist businesses impacted by LRT. That was one of the stakeholders in terms of their feedback to the process. What you're going to see in the staff report, our staff are recommending in terms of amending the program, if committee chooses to amend the program and amend it in a manner that reduces the levy impact that we come back through the 2018 budget process, to have a more wholesome discussion as to how that potential savings can be applied, not only to incentive programs, but to other pressures or issues that are arising leading into the 2018 budget year. So again, that is staff's recommendation you'll see in the staff report. So with respect to the recommended options, staff are recommending that the vacant unit rebate program be phased out over two years. Status quo for 2017, 30% rebate, reducing the rebate to 15% in 2018, and a full elimination of the rebate, the vacant unit rebate in 2019. Some of the pros of this approach is promotes occupancy and improved care of property. Levy savings of the elimination of the program would represent approximately $2.5 million in terms of municipal levy savings. Eliminates inequity amongst classes. What that refers to is not all property classes are eligible for such a rebate. So for instance, multi-res and residential are not eligible for rebates as it relates to when those properties are vacant. Fairness to taxpayers, if you consider the fact that $2.5 million is applied against the general levy, the principal contributors to this burden are residential taxpayers. And so by eliminating the program would provide relief to all classes and potentially to residential property taxpayers. And with respect to this option, it is supported by a number of the community groups, including some of the BIAs. And you'll see in our comparator municipalities, a number of our comparator municipalities are proposing proceeding with an exact or similar approach to the vacant unit rebate. Some of the cons, so balance in terms of the recommendations, some of the cons, financial impact to some owners during difficult times. So in terms of those owners who may, from time to time, access the program during an economic downturn, would not have that eligibility. So again, that's recognized as a con in terms of eliminating the program. May hinder development of some properties, so recognizing that some properties may be in distressed areas is the rebate may provide some financial assistance to those properties. And may encourage investment in communities that maintain the rebate. We're very sensitive and conscious to understand how our neighboring communities may be proceeding. And you'll see in our slide that we've tried to capture in the report, we've tried to capture how other communities are proceeding. So again, we're very sensitive to how other neighboring communities who we may be competing with as it relates to economic development and economic activity, we're very conscious how they are proceeding with respect to the program. Other options, so an alternative option that is in the staff report is a time limit. Properties could apply, for instance, one option is for two consecutive years, so capping the eligibility of the rebates. Some considerations is recognizing that time may be needed to fill vacancies. I would suggest, though, the phase out is providing property owners some opportunities to adjust, but again, this option provides some greater flexibility to property owners as it relates to actively filling vacancies. This option is supported by some of the interest groups, not necessarily as effective to encourage occupancy. Uncertainty with respect to levy savings. So while it's clear to us as to what the elimination of the program is, continuing the program and capping it will cost some fluctuations from year to year as to what the cost would be. Number of potential recipients will vary from year to year, so it'll create some challenges as it relates to how to budget for the program. And with respect to administration, capping the program would require some additional administration as, again, we would have to ensure that A) properties do not exceed the time limits, we would have to ensure that property ownership is not adjusted just to avoid some of the rules, and we would have to try to ensure that properties are in fact vacant over those time periods. Status quo is another option, maintaining the 30% rebate. So some considerations continues to provide assistance to those property owners, may encourage continued vacancies. So once again, about 55% of those who were recipients in 2015 have been recipients for four more consecutive years. May lead to underdeveloped or neglected properties. Again, this Again, this is information that BIAs, for instance, are sharing with municipal staff. Continued significant levy costs. So again, the program as a whole represents $2.5 million in municipal and a further million dollars in provincial education. And it's difficult to administer and verify, and what is meant by the last bullet point is, again, as applications are received, there's a level of trust in the information that's being provided. We don't necessarily go out and physically inspect. And again, recognizing that, so for instance, as it relates to 2016, applicants had up to February 28th of 2017 to submit their application for 2016. So again, there's a level of trust with respect to the information that's provided to the city from the property owners. In terms of how other municipalities are proposing to proceed, for those who are proposing to proceed with a change, you'll see that Toronto's proposing a phase-out elimination ending of July 1st, 2018, for commercial properties only. So with respect to the first, the commercial vacant unit rebate. Ottawa is a phase-out elimination ending in the 2018 tax year. Sudbury, a phase-out elimination ending in the 2018 tax year. Halton, a phase-out elimination ending in 2019 tax year. Peel Region, phase-out elimination ending in the 2020 tax year. So again, all eliminations, just different years in terms of when it would be fully eliminated. London, a phase-out elimination ending in the 2020 tax year. There are some communities who are still considering options. I know as recently as Friday, in conversation with some of my counterparts, I believe Waterloo is still investigating and will be considering the issue in 2018, and likewise, I believe, Windsor. So there are some municipalities who aren't targeting this July 1 date in terms of a recommendation to the minister, but nonetheless, they are considering pursuing some action or some amendment to the programs. So the second program is the vacant and excess land reduction program. So just to jump ahead in terms of the recommendation, staff are suggesting that this be referred to 2018. We need some additional time to, A, consult with the community with respect to the vacant and excess commercial industrial land, and we need to better understand the impact it's going to have on our tax ratios and tax levies. So for instance, one effect of, for instance, elimination, we want to ensure it doesn't increase our tax ratio for commercial, for instance, which is 1.98 above that 1.98, and put them in a protected tax class, which means we couldn't levy the full budget impact, levy impact on those. So again, staff are recommending as it relates to the vacant land and excess land to do further consultation, investigation, and come back in 2018. But vacant land, again, is land that has no buildings, structures, and is not used. That's the definition for vacant land. Excess land is land that is not needed to serve or support the existing improvement. So my previous example, a shopping mall that has parking, sometimes there's land that shoulders that facility, that's considered excess land and receives a 30% discount in terms of the property tax. The municipal portion, the municipal, and again, this is forgone revenue. The municipal portion of the forgone revenue is approximately $3 million a year. The provincial education would represent an additional million dollars over and above the $3 million. Again, we've gone through a consultation engagement process. There's been some limited input with respect to the business community as it relates to the vacant and excess land. And for that reason, staff are suggesting pursuing further consultation on the second program, the vacant and excess land. Very few minutes, the approach that staff, City of Hamilton staff are proposing is similar to what other municipalities, their staff are proposing to their council, is we're wanting some additional time to better assess what the impact would be and to do some further consultation. And for that reason, staff, City of Hamilton staff are recommending to report back during the 2018 budget process with respect to any proposed amendments in this program. And that represents the end of my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Very detailed presentation, and always nice to see savings without service impacts. Counselor Marula Green, Counselor Brenda Johnson, Counselor Skelly, and Counselor Farr, my speakers listed at this point in time. Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thanks very much for the presentation, Mike. A couple of things, first and foremost, I think when we have an opportunity like this, it's one that needs to be thoroughly vetted and one that is tied into what our priorities are. So I want some clarity, though, on a couple of things. Firstly, the allocation presently that we're going to have access to is $2.5 million annually with respect to the vacant building subsidy.
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's correct. With respect to vacant unit rebate, we budget $2.5 million annually.
Okay. And the forthcoming 2018 issue regarding vacant land, that's going to equal $3 million, making it a total of $5.5 million effective 2018.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, with respect to the vacant and excess land, staff have estimated the forgone revenue, municipal forgone revenues, $3 million annually. What we're recommending in the staff report is to take no immediate action with respect to the vacant excess land, to bring that forward during the 2018 budget process for further consideration, allowing for further engagement as well as for staff to have some additional time to better assess what the potential effects would be. And again, what we wouldn't want is for a change to trigger a negative tax effect that would negatively, for instance, impact residential. So what we wouldn't want to do is make a change that restricts our ability to levy commercial industrial because they're now above the provincial threshold of 1.98. I apologize in getting very technical, but those are the considerations we want to avoid. And again, we would come back once we've had additional opportunity to do that analysis.
Okay. Now, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think it's important to recognize firstly and to provide some credit to Counselor Morelli, who since the 90s spoke very vocally and aggressively on this particular issue. And in 2005, it was his motion, I recall vividly, that led to that action, which leads to where we are today. So he needs to be acknowledged for that. Secondly, with respect to the, I guess, the suggestion that we can be providing incentives to LRT-affected businesses, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think it's important to recognize, I believe that's illegal under present legislation. That would be considered bonusing, and we would require legislation, royal assent, to allow us to provide that incentive.
Yeah. So through the chair, again, not knowing what's being proposed in terms of an incentive, if it is to provide direct relief, that may be deemed bonusing, and we may not be eligible to do so, is I would point out that we have other incentive programs. So again, in consideration on how to potentially apply the potential savings, subject to how council wishes to proceed, is keep in mind that we have other incentive programs for these classes, including the RACE program, the facade program, the multi-res program, sorry, multi-res, not specific, commercial industrial, the energy program, the LEED program. So there are a number of other programs that the city has to assist both commercial and industrial property.
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Mayor, all I'm trying to simply say, presently, under legislation, we couldn't do it. We would have to create an incentive program, such as the ones we do have, that requires provincial legislation for us to act accordingly. So effectively, that throws that off the table. It has no merit unless, of course, we ask for that permission. So I'll take that off the table. Now, moving on to, I think, other priorities that the city is faced with, and I will be bringing forward a motion accordingly, is that the actual 2.5 or the 3 million, it's 2.5 million, be allocated for, or at least look at the feasibility of an incentive program to target and tackle our affordable housing crisis. So the issue is to, in essence, through inclusionary zoning, that if somebody proposes any type of development that will incorporate 5%, 10%, and this will be a citywide program, that they would be able to apply for this type of incentive to pursue that. So through you, Mr. Mayor, from that perspective, we wouldn't need any type of special legislation, and it would be something that we could pursue based on action of this council, I presume.
Yeah. So through the chair, in terms of any requirement in legislation, it doesn't sound as if it would require legislative regulatory change. It would be subject to council approval. And again, what staff are suggesting, these options, committee may wish to bring these forward through the budget process as you have a better sense of all the competing demands in terms of our limited financial resources. So knowing that in 2017, we've had an extraordinary year with respect to our climate events, and that's creating some pressures, we know that we will be facing some competing pressures in 2018. And for that reason, staff are suggesting that council take a more holistic approach in terms of how to apply any potential savings if, again, council chooses to amend this program in the 2018 budget process.
Right. But again, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think it's important to recognize that $2.5 million savings, it takes up what, 7.5 million for 1% increase or decrease? Is that correct?
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in terms of municipal, it's approximately $8 million for 1%.
Okay. So on the grand scheme of things, that $2.5 million is thrown in just to the general levy to try to mitigate that, the general levy pressure, it usually gets lost in the mix of all of our inputs and towards our outputs. That doesn't necessarily target a challenge that we're faced with. The reality is, we have over 5,000 people on a waiting list for affordable housing with the influx of property values. The biggest challenge the city will have is to actually have people, our children, be able to purchase homes locally. So the focus and the challenge is there. The additional money, when you look at the grand scheme of things, isn't very much with respect to try to meet those challenges, but it is one step towards a targeted, focused budget allocation as opposed to simply a general overall where it's lost in a shuffle and we don't see an outcome-based solution. So all I'm basically suggesting at the appropriate time is that we look at that as being a priority to determine the feasibility of pursuing that accordingly. So I presume you wouldn't have a problem looking at the feasibility of that, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in terms of direction from committee, if council or if committee chooses us to, directs us to report back, we have no problem reporting back. And I would just point out is that this committee and this council has approved the $50 million over 10 years with respect to housing, and that may form part of that overall strategy that staff would be reporting back with respect to that previous commitment. That may form part of that strategy. So it could complement, and it could be part of that strategy, it could be over and above part of that strategy. So again, we're in the hands of committee. If committee asks, requests staff to report back with respect to the feasibility of such a program, we would report back. I would just identify that there may be an opportunity to align it with the $50 million commitment from council.
And the other component to this, I think, needs to be recognized is that most of these vacant properties exist in some of the, which were some of the most challenged areas of the city. So in essence, although the intent would be to have a citywide program, I think the message should be known that some areas of the city have been impacted quite negatively because of that previous legislation. I'm not suggesting that that money be reallocated to those specific areas, but there would be some, there would be merit to suggest that as well. But the focus of affordable housing, I think, is key. And through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, when we're dealing with incentive programs, I look at, for instance, the CIPA program downtown, and I say to myself, that is, at this point, I think, in many ways overstated now. It's to a point where the downtown is booming, we don't no longer need to provide incentives. Frankly, they should be lining up and following their due diligence and just basically allowing the market to dictate now. The fact we still have that in the downtown core, I think, is really a true waste of finances that should be reallocated to areas like Kenilworth Avenue North, Barton Street, where we actually need it, now where people are now literally reaping benefits and coming in, flocking in, and we're doing them a favor now. There was a time, through you, Mr. Mayor, or Deputy Mayor, that we had the incentive program because we wanted to provide somebody a favor to do business here. Well, frankly, we're beyond that now. Now, we're doing them a favor to do business in the city, and I move today that we eliminate that if I had the support, but I'm definitely working on doing that, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Thank you very much. Inspired by the previous speaker's comments, certainly, I would tend to agree that we're in a place right now where we can shift our priorities to be able to stimulate, I think, the right types of policies that are aligned with our strategic mission, vision, and values. I'd like to begin, Mr. Deputy Mayor, just to acknowledge the work of staff. I know Gloria Rojas, and seeing the correspondence in here and working with the communities to come to this conclusion is fantastic. I'm in full support of staff recommendations, and I just wanted to say that, you know, the folks that have been out there in our communities, if I could take a moment, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to echo, you know, individual people in these communities is a great example of our asset-based model with the hubs, Gibson and Lansdale. I know Julie Michael has been literally going door to door along Barton Street, finding this out. But I have to say to the previous speaker's comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and to go on the record today, a lot of the general public doesn't fully understand what our roles and responsibilities are as it relates to vacant land. And I say that because I have emails and ideas from people that just say, why don't you take these vacant properties and turn them into affordable housing? And, you know, I have to remind them that in a fair, open, and democratic society, we don't do that with the private property rights that are here. However, what we do have as a municipality are creative tools that the previous speaker has brought up to incentivize the right outcomes and to have a targeted approach to relieving the housing market pressures. So I'm in full support in exploring that as an option because I can tell you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that the, as bold as our $50 million over 10 years, the $5 million a year that are left on the table every year annually still isn't enough. And so, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to Mike, looking at these blends, we go into next year, and we're going to have potentially another $3 million on the table, $5.5 million in total?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if staff's recommendations were to be approved, how this would be phased in in terms of budget impacts is there would be a potential savings, levy savings of about $1.5 million in 2018, and that would be specific to the vacant unit rebate. Subject to a further conversation in 2018 as it relates to the excess and vacant land, what is available is up to $3 million in terms of forgone revenue. So again, if the first program, and again, with respect to the first program, it's phased in, 2018's a $1.5 million levy savings, and 2019, it would be on an annual basis, subject to, if, again, the savings weren't applied to other programs, but if it was applied to levy savings, in total, $2.5 million annually. So an additional $1 million in 2019. So again, $1.5 million in '18, and then additional $1 million in 2019 would represent the $2.5 million. With respect to the excess and vacant land, it's up to $3 million, subject on how committee and council wishes to proceed, or if committee, council chooses the status quo, again, it's not a necessarily budget item, it's a forgone revenue of above $3 million annually.
Amazing. And I, like, I understand and appreciate in the 90s, you know, perhaps when Hamilton in our low times needed a little bit of support in that regard, I mean, that's decades ago. And so I'm glad that the provincial government has finally, finally, after all of these years, saw the light on this one, realized that it was a disincentive for redevelopment and a loss leader from a taxation standpoint that really further commodified land prices, you know, created increased pressures on speculation and land hoarding, which is huge, not talked about often, but the idea of just gobbling up as much vacant property as you can to hold on to it for infinity while it's, you know, while everybody else does the work to have the uplift in the community. So thank you for this presentation. I'm fully in support of the feasibility motion put forward by Counselor Marula as a targeted approach to relieving the housing market pressures and to incentivize the right outcomes. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Yep, thank you. And thank you for your presentation, Mike. There's just a couple of questions that have arisen from your chat. One of the things that I've noticed is that you're very much focused on commercial and industrial. Okay. But nothing has been mentioned about residential.
Right. And so through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the program is only eligible for commercial and industrial property owners. Hence, the reference in terms of staff's recommendation, staff are identifying the fact that eliminating the program provides fairness to taxpayers, the given, given the fact that residential property owners are not eligible for such a rebate, nor are multi-residential property owners eligible for a rebate. So this is targeted to commercial and industrial property owners who have, whose properties are vacant or in part vacant, in part where there's delineated or physically separated units, they are eligible for the vacant unit rebate.
And the reason I'm asking that question is, I am on the AFNA, and I notice that we do end up giving tax rebates for homes that are, there was, there was a fire, they're no longer occupying it, they've been out, and that's compassionate, and I totally support that. So are they two different?
Yes. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, those, those programs, again, the authorities under Municipal Act 367 Reg, 368 Reg, so from time to time, if a property is destroyed because of fire, there is some relief in terms of the effect on that property is not being occupied until such time as that property is redeveloped, and then it would come back onto the tax roll. So again, different, different intents, and the intention of those regs are to provide relief to those property owners who've gone through an extraordinary event such as a fire. But to the Counselor's point is, there are incentive or rebate programs for seniors and low income. So those are the two programs that we have available for residential property owners.
Okay. Thank you very much for clearing that up. And I'm, and I am very supportive of the abandoned buildings or the boarded up buildings. I'm very, very supportive of that. In case in point, we have two homes, actually, that are sitting on the Costco site in Winona that have been boarded up for the last seven years. So I don't understand why they shouldn't have come down right away when that, that development was approved. It should be going, get rid of those eyesores, if you will. So I totally understand that. You talk about a time limit, and then you're asking to introduce a time limit, and yet I heard earlier that we have frequent flyers who are constantly coming in and asking for an extension. So can you just clarify the time limit for me?
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, staff's recommendation is to eliminate, phase out. What we're providing, as we typically do, is alternatives for committee, and in part because of the feedback we've heard from some of the stakeholders. Some of the stakeholders did identify time limits as an alternative approach and recognizing that it shouldn't be provided indefinitely for all property owners for some of the reasons that Counselors identified. So again, in terms of options, besides status quo, which is not necessarily an option, it would just be a continuation of the current practice, one of the options is a time limit, what staff are identifying, this is one approach, would be to limit it for up to two consecutive years and to ensure that there aren't frequent flyers. So again, it is not staff's recommendation, but again, we provide committee with alternatives, and this would be an alternative.
Okay, thank you. So unit vacancy and vacant land are all getting parceled into this.
So through, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the province is allowing municipalities to amend and to develop a local solution as it relates to, I'm sure, I'm going to flip to the very beginning so I can differentiate between. So it's two programs. The vacant unit rebate is the one that we've principally been focused on. Those are the storefronts that have been vacant, sometimes boarded up, and they are eligible if they are vacant for greater than 90 consecutive days in a calendar year for a 30% rebate. The issue that staff are suggesting to report back in 2018 on is the second program, which is the excess and vacant commercial industrial land. And so with respect to commercial and industrial, it represents a 30% discount in terms of their tax rate, with the exception of commercial vacant class, there is currently no discounts in the City of Hamilton with respect to that class. In total, that represents $3 million in foregone revenue to the city annually, and what we want to do is some further consultation. We've had a lot of feedback with respect to the first program, the vacant unit rebate. We've had limited feedback with respect to the vacant excess land, and I think what's been suggested in part from committee is what staff are suggesting, we need some additional time to assess. So we want to make certain that any proposed changes, A, aligns to Council's strategic plan, and in part, Council's strategic plan is economic growth and prosperity. So if there is some manner to incent and try to accelerate the utilization of vacant land, that may form part of our feedback to, to Council. But again, we need to look at the strategic plan as a whole.
Okay, thank you. And, and just to be clear, excess land, because oftentimes that excess land is used as a buffer for, to separate that commercial property to the, to the neighborhood behind. Again, Winona Costco, it's the same, it's the same idea. So we're not, we're not including the buffer lands or the landscaped buffer lands, we're just including anything that's just basically left like a sandlot around the, the commercial property.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, those are the issues I think we need to better understand and assess. So as another example, what we don't want to do is be punitive to property owners as another example, someone who has a, a small hairstylist's hairstyle storefront who may have vacant land with one parking space behind, that's considered vacant land. What we don't want to do is be punitive to those property owners. So there's, there's probably a number of possibilities. We want to assess what those possibilities are, bring that forward to committee so that you can have an informed decision how you may want to proceed, if you're proceeding, if you're considering amendments or changes to the vacant and excess land.
And I, because I brought out the word sandlot, I just remember even, even some of the hamlets that I have, those vacant lots, the kids are playing baseball, and they're playing, so that's the other issue. Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to get some clarification. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Counselors Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Mike, a couple of questions about the larger retail outlets and why, my concern is the, the pressure that larger retail outlets are facing today for a number of reasons, including the growth of e-commerce. Sears just announced the closure of 66 more stores in the States, and the pressures in Canada are huge. Target left their building, although they've, in essence, HomeSense in Aincaster has flipped over and taken the spot, that property still remains vacant, they're looking for a user. I know that, that the, the, the commercial outlets that have these large property retail outlets don't want that space to remain vacant, they will do everything they can to occupy it. How will we treat people or retailers, property owners, that are actively searching for tenants and not abusing the, the tax rebate?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, staff's, if committee were to approve staff's recommendation, those large shopping centers would be treated in the same manner as the small commercial storefronts in that they would be, the rebate would be phased out, and then, starting in 2019, they, it would be not available to them. In terms of the, the magnitude or materiality, I did look at one of our largest shopping malls, and what I've seen in the last three years is declining utilization of the program. So they've had fewer vacancies and they are, their, their access and utilization, the vacant unit rebate, the very first program that we've been focused on, has declined. You know, somewhere in the range of less than 100,000, somewhere in the range of that $60 to $70,000. For an individual, that would be significant for a large operation like that. I'm not sure how material $60 to $70,000 on a, on a commercial property that may be generating millions of dollars in income, maybe. So in terms of magnitude, so the first point is, I'm seeing declining utilization by those property owners when I look at some of them specifically. The second point is their ability to absorb may be greater than the small commercial. And the final comment is, which is what we've tried to identify for the benefit of committee, is when impact assesses those properties, they're already capturing their historical experience in terms of vacancies. And so when they take their gross income and they say to a, and I'll use an example of a Limey or Jackson Square, what's been your historical experience in terms of vacancies, they net that off of their income to arrive at a assessed value. So I think in part, they're receiving recognition and relief in terms of their vacancy experience through the approach that impact takes in assessing their properties.
Thank you. Through the, through the Chair, I'm going to push back on that a little because I've been hearing concerns about the collapse of, of a major retail outlet and the impact on, on, on a mall. Is there, is there an opportunity for the city to perhaps allow some of these, these malls to continue to benefit from a rebate, knowing that, that the impact of a major retailer going out of business would, would be, in my, what they've said to me is, it would be a major, major problem for them, and they don't want the space to sit vacant. They will be actively pursuing if, if a space, if, if an, if a retailer goes out of business, but it's not going to happen tomorrow, and it's more and more difficult to find businesses that are at that scale that can move into a property. So it may mean, you know, chopping up the, the property, finding a number of, of tenants. I'm very concerned that we are looking at this without recognizing that there may be opportunities to look at it case by case as opposed to a blanket decision, because as I said, just, just in the last 20 hours, Sears has announced they're, they're closing 66 stores in the U.S. We've seen Target collapse in Canada, and I wouldn't want to see our retailers have to suffer because when they're actively looking for tenants.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think the, the short answer is, we're in the hands of committee in terms of, if committee wanted to target some continuation in terms of the, of a vacancy rebate to the large shopping malls or shopping mall classes, we could report back with respect to that option. I think what we're trying to do is provide some sense as to how they do receive some consideration in terms of their, their vacancies, recognizing if a shopping mall loses a big anchor, that does create challenges in terms of not only that anchor tenant, but some of the co-tenants in those facilities, because sometimes lease agreements have language with respect to relief for some of those property owners. So again, we're in the, in the hands of committee with respect to, again, we're recommending, staff are recommending phasing it out, eliminating, but if committee wishes to amend and to continue to provide relief to a subclass such as shopping malls, shopping centers, we could report back with that option.
For large tenants.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we would have to look at the property owner. Again, it'll represent a bit of a challenge to target it for specific tenants of a property. I believe we would be limited to providing it to the property as a whole. So when, for instance, be a Target or a Sears footprint, it would have to be provided to the mall as a whole.
Okay. Thank you for that. Through the Chair, LRT, we're introducing this just before we start building the LRT, and now we're saying we're, we're eliminating the vacancy rebate, and some of these buildings, perhaps many of these buildings, may become vacant. Is this the appropriate time to be introducing something like this?
Yeah. So through, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in terms of the impact of LRT as it relates to the potential impact on vacancies, I'm not sure that, based on the, the information that I've been privy to, that it's been suggested that a majority or significant number may be impacted in terms of, of the vacancy of those properties or a change in use of those properties. Again, we could come back with some additional information. What I'm suggesting in this, the recommendation is to come back in 2018 with a more holistic discussion around all of our programs that we provide. So as it relates to those properties, again, we'd want to consult with impact to see how impact would treat those properties in terms of their assessment during a period of construction to see whether or not impact would treat those properties any differently. I mentioned previously our other incentive programs, the commercial facade programs, the energy programs, the LEED programs, our RACE grants, the one that I didn't mention previously, but is financially our most significant program, is our development charge exemption program. So we exempt a number of expansions for commercial properties. We have discounts for industrial properties, so it's important for committee to know the magnitude of those programs for these same classes with respect to affordable housing. We discount DCs 50% on affordable housing. So having all that information before you so that you can truly assess all of our programs and how do they align to the strategic plan in the context of this particular program to better assess if there's an amendment to the program, if that amendment results in a levy savings, where would those savings best be targeted towards, and recognition that there are a number of other programs that we offer for these same property classes.
Thank you. Through the Chair, that wouldn't apply, though, to a standalone, smaller building that is now vacant due to construction? Not, the DCs and that wouldn't really apply. So is this, my, my question is, is this the right time as we're heading into major construction in our downtown core to be, to be eliminating any sort of a vacant building rebate?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's probably best for the LRT to provide direct impact in terms of the timing. Again, my recall in terms of, of the Kitchener experience or other jurisdictions is, I don't recall their having, their experience being that there was a significant change in the occupancy of their commercial. But again, that was my recall, and it may be, again, a greater benefit to committee to have the LRT team just to bring that information back in terms of what, what's been the experience in those other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Farr, next on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Mike. Mike, we used to be reported on with respect to where we were at on the, I guess it was like an index on, on commercial, citywide, commercial properties and businesses citywide. And I just recall last term in Council and Planning Committee, Counselor Clark used to ask this question a lot. I think at one point, we were at 87 or 90% capacity, and the formula basically was based on what will the market bear? So do you happen to know off the top where we're at right now in terms of citywide commercial businesses and what our market will bear?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I understand the question, is the Counselor asking about vacancy, what the?
What our market can bear in terms of the number of commercial, commercial businesses in our city. I know we had some sort of index or formula that we used to report, be reported on too.
I'm not sure, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm not sure if Glenn would know what that figure is.
Through the Chair, no, I'm sorry, that isn't, that isn't something that, that we're tracking. I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay, Glenn, thank you. And, you know, I'll take it offline because I know in Planning Committee on two occasions last term, there was a number floated, floated around, and I think we were at 87 or 89% because we were looking at the time at an approval, zoning approval, I think it was on the East Mountain. No worries, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything other than, out of my own curiosity, I asked that question, but it may, down the line, if we're going to look at the CIPA or any adjustments therein, be something I'd want to get a handle on. Through you, Chair, I don't know if it's to Mike or Glenn, maybe Glenn, because it was asked, and I'm certainly interested. I know Glenn, is that okay, if I ask the Director of Economic Development? We had our five-year CIPA review, our Community Improvement Plan area review last year, so that means the next five-year review is four years away. The big piece on CIPA is obviously development charges. We've been reducing development charges to the extent of 5% over the last three years was 100, then it went to 90 with a donation to arts, and now I think we're hovering around 80 or 75. So if you could tell me where we're hovering at now with the DCs, and if there's any possibility, rather than wait another four years for a CIPA review, given the economic climate and notwithstanding the fact, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, with our CIPA investments... our CIPA investments, thanks to the municipal act, we're allowed to create the map, we're getting $25 to $50 back on every dollar we spend. So it's a great program. Glenn might call it the goose that laid the golden egg and it's working, there's no doubt about it. But rejigging the map or having a fuller CIPA discussion, could it happen sooner? Through you to Glenn.
Glenn?
Through the chair, to answer the counselor's question, we always could. If you, if you direct us to do a review earlier, we will do a review earlier. Absolutely. It's been on our mind to do that as well and to actually go back to the pro forma that you'll recall we, we paid to have built by a private sector financial analysis firm and Barry Lyons to look at what is necessary. Are the, are the projects, we're specifically looking at multi-res downtown, are they able to happen without the incentives? And the conclusion a year ago was they were not. So we, we share your, your concern and your interest in re-examining that. So we, we have set that up to do later on this year. So in, in terms of a review of the full CIP, I suggest that maybe what we should do is have a review of the development, the, the DCs. I mean, that's the one that's coming up. As you said, it's at 80% now, but it's dropping to 75% July 6th. So, you know, one month from now, that's dropping to 75% waiver. There's in place another 5% happening the following year to 70. At that point in time, your DC bylaw will expire. It is, it is your bylaw, it's a five-year review, would be at your consideration to change it from there. Certainly our recommendation would be that you do accelerate, that you don't leave it at a 5% reduction. And we have been communicating that to the development industry. So they are, they are anticipating it, but they've also said, listen, if you're going to do that, please don't just drop it. You know, give us fair warning and give us a three-year opportunity to react because that's the timeframe in terms of planning a new project. We have to do our pro formas, knowing what we're going to be paying for DCs, very difficult to do that if you don't give us three years notice. So I think I've covered off your, your questions, Counselor?
Mike on the same issue?
Yes. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think Glenn highlighted the, the timelines that are significant is that our DC bylaw expires July of 2019. Council will have to go, starting in 2018, go through a whole background, DC background study process, and we'll come back with respect to the bylaw and the DC exemptions. And what I expect is the conversations won't be limited to CIPA in terms of the exemptions. We, we currently provide a discount to industrial instead of the $19.24 a square foot, we're charging somewhere in, I believe, $11.25. We exempt hospitals 100% if they receive funding under the Public Hospital Act. We exempt 100% places of worship. We provide exemptions for commercial properties that have expansions. There's a number of exemptions in our DC bylaw that council will likely be reviewing in terms of whether to proceed, amend, or eliminate some of those exemptions, not just the CIPA.
And sorry, Mike, through you, Chair, when was that report coming to us?
So again, our DC by, as Glenn's identified, is the, the reason we make reference to the CIPA being 75% in 2018, or 17 in July 5th or 6th of 2018, it drops to 70% is our bylaw expires at July 2019. Council will have to make a decision on our development charge bylaw in July of 2019.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I kind of strayed a little and I appreciate the latitude, but I do think it's relevant based on the first series of questions. And so I might at the appropriate time move in it since it sounds like it's doable. On the CIPA piece, and if we wanted to add a reminder or a little bit of a report on where we're at with DCs across the board, maybe we could ask Glenn prior to the 2017, 18 budget to offer that report and maybe at that time would be, we'd be able to have a fuller discussion as a council on where we may amend appropriately, but hopefully still continue in this city, not just being exclusive or parochial, that, that great program. So at the appropriate time, I'll move that, look for a secondary, and it sounds like that's okay with our Director of Economic Development? Thank you.
I'll come back to you under motions because it really doesn't have a lot to do with the vacant unit rebate, but it is relevant to the conversation. There's no doubt about that. Thank you for that. And I have Counselor Conley next on my list and then followed by Counselor Partridge.
Thank you. A lot of the questions are really good questions today and I've learned a lot, but I just want to make, get it clear, the $3 million and the $2.5 million that, that industrial and commercial can get, we put those monies come from the levy, right? From the residential levy.
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, they both impact the levy, but in different manners. The first program, the vacant unit rebate, it's an application-based program. So we budget for that program. We budget $2.5 million annually. The second program, the excess of vacant land, if, if you're a property that's eligible for that, you receive an automatic discount in terms of your tax rate. So you don't have to apply for it. You're deemed eligible and you receive a reduced tax rate. What we're identifying is if that were to be amended, eliminating that discount, that would represent an additional $3 million in tax levy annually to the City of Hamilton.
$3 million savings.
So it would be $3 million in additional revenue. Sorry, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it would represent $3 million in additional revenue.
Yes. Which would impact the residential levy. I mean, we, we're based on how much our, our programs are, right?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if the programs were eliminated, depending on how council chose to apply those savings, it could represent a tax savings to all classes, including residential. If the decision of council were to redirect that funding to other priorities, then it wouldn't necessarily represent.
I guess my point is, you know, we've been fighting hard to get the levy down to reasonable numbers and I know you guys did a great job this year to get it down to 2.1, I think it was, or 1.9, not exactly. But we've done a good job. And, and I, I think the residents have put, the burden of this programs have been put on their shoulders and we've been, we've been adding a little bit of tax onto them every year to pay for these programs. And I think it would be very appropriate that they get a break. And I know this year's going to be a tough year for, for budgets. And any savings that we can, we do get from this should go to, or I'm suggesting it should go back and, and help the tax rate. And if it's $5 million, if I'm right there, that's like 0.6 of a percent of, of the budget, 0.7, something in that area. And I, I think it's, I think they deserve it, you know? The burden's been on them. They've been paying more taxes because of the economic situation and the loss of revenue from industry in the last few years. And, and I hope that we, we can recognize that, that they deserve a break. And it's not much of a break, it's 0.67 of a, of a, of the tax levy, but it is a break anyways. And, and that's how we start on this stuff. We start with, can we save $2 million here? Or can we save $5 million here? Can we save? And that's how we did the budget in the first place. So I, I'm all in for, I'm all for what you're recommend, what you're recommending. And I hope we can eliminate it all by 2019. And I hope the residents can, can save some money or have their tax levy less than what it would have been if we didn't do it. As far as, as far as nonprofit or housing, yes, we're putting 50 million in. We could put 100 million in and we'd still have a problem. You know, we're not going to resolve this overnight. It's a long-term strategic plan and I think we're doing the right things, but we just can't throw everything that, that we look like a little savings back into housing or, or other things. Sometimes when we have savings, we should let the people have the savings. So it's a funny concept, isn't it? So I, I, I do support what you want to do, but I do disagree with some of the use of the money. I think we're, we're talking about use of money when we haven't done it yet. So let's do one step at a time.
More comments and questions, but thank you. No, that's perfectly fine. Counselor Partridge, you're my final first-time speaker on the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and good questions and good discussion all the way around. Mike, on page five of 10 of the report, it itemizes the number of businesses and the years that they've been in the vacancy rebate program. And the four-plus years, it talks about 292 businesses. Is there a general area within the city that the majority of those businesses are located or are they spread throughout the whole city?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm not sure if we have an immediate answer to that, but we can follow up and provide that information to committee members. I would expect there would be certain corridors that there may be higher utilization. One that comes to mind would be Barn Street that may represent a higher burn or utilization of the program. But again, that, that could be information that we try to identify and report back with.
I would appreciate that because I think, I think it's an important question that, you know, we need to have an idea if there's specific areas within the city that need some, some attention. And I, and I guess my next question would be, you know, would, of that 292, would that include any of the Stelco lands?
So through the chair, I don't believe the Stelco lands are captured in the first program. Absolutely. In the second program, I expect that they would be. And that's part of the reason why we would want to take some further time to assess and analyze the information. And I apologize in terms of your first question with respect to the utilization. Just in terms of recall, some of the BIA conversations is absolutely, Barn Street BIA identified in terms of the number of vacancies, less so in the, some of the Dundas and the Anchesters. There's pockets, an isolated one or two, but there seems to be less of an issue in those BIAs. So in terms of BIAs, I would suggest that, that the Barn Street BIA, and I'm not sure Village is in that same situation, but absolutely in the Barn Street BIA, that was the feedback.
Thank you for that. And, Mr. Mayor, I guess, so that leads me to my, my next question associated with that is within these lands, would they be located in areas where there's existing incentive programs that they could tap into?
So through the chair, absolutely so. Our commercial facade program, the other programs afforded to the BIAs. And I think that in part is beyond just the programs, incentive programs is I, I would suspect part of the rationale for the position some of the BIAs are taking is that if those facilities are, are redeveloped or occupied and are producing economic benefit, it benefits the BIA in the sense that there are more customers in their BIA, more economic activity as well. Those properties may access some of our programs. So we may see uplift in the utilization of the commercial facade program. So I don't know if that'll represent a pressure going forward. So, so again, if this results in incenting property owners to make improvements in an effort to occupy that space and create some economic activity, the effect may be there, there may be greater demand for some of our other incentive programs such as the commercial facade program.
And I think that's an, an important linkage to make. And I was wondering about the, the brownfield development funding. We provide incentive funding for that as well?
Yes. So through, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we provide it with respect to the race program and again, for commercial industrial.
Yeah. And thank you for that. And, you know, again, I think that I'm fully in support of, of what you're recommending that, that we do because, you know, if, if, if owners are just holding on to these properties when we already have other incentive programs that could help develop those lands, then, you know, I think it's time to wean them off, the, you know, the rebate program. I just wanted, I have another question here. And some of the savings that you're referring to, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I'm wondering if some of those are based on assumptions that the properties will fix up and start paying full taxes?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we haven't factored that into the potential uplift. So in terms of savings, the $2.5 million on the first program, three, that is simply eliminating the rebate and the discount.
Okay.
If the, the effect is that there's occupancy generating rents, that could have an improvement in terms of our assessment base and we may result, it may result in a benefit to the City of Hamilton in terms of a higher assessment and some shifting of some of that tax burn, again, between communities and neighborhoods. So again, that, that would be, I mean, as part of the rationale is rather than having those assets being idle, if there's an opportunity to bring those back in stream in terms of economic activity, that would absolutely be one of the outcomes we would be trying to achieve through the recommendation.
And, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think, you know, that's definitely the end goal. If we can do that, then we can look at what, you know, Counsel Conley was suggesting in, in being able to give some relief back to our residential taxpayers because we do need to grow our industrial and, and commercial tax base. And, and we've been trying to do it for many years. So I appreciate your answers. And, Mr. Deputy Mayor, as far as the LRT, I wouldn't be supportive of any of the savings going towards that. I think we're still five years away, probably at least, before we're going to have any impact on businesses, you know, that, well, we don't know at this point, but I think it would be fair and prudent to have the LRT office staff report back to us at the appropriate time, just what, you know, challenges there may be around that. But I think at this point, that's five years at minimum out, could be more than that. So, you know, I wouldn't be supportive of that. And lastly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I certainly support Counselor Marula's motion and look forward to that coming forward. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, for the first time.
Thank you, Mike, for a great presentation as always, and I fully support this. My, my only concern is that there are sometimes mitigating circumstances. So when you have 292 properties on a vacancy list, there are sometimes rationales and reasons why that is happening. And I, I wouldn't want to get into a position of penalizing, you know, folks that are making investments and having challenges or difficulties as a result of, you know, unforeseen circumstances. So is there, is there a, any kind of an appeal mechanism in this in terms of folks that might come back and say, look, you know, as a result of, of this reduction, it, it is going to cause me, you know, great concern? Or, I mean, is there any kind of process like that or are we just talking a kind of a hard cut? Cut it off and, and then we'll see what happens?
So through, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the recommendation does represent that hard cut in that the program would be eliminated, it'd be phased out and eliminated ultimately in 2019. The, some of the feedback we've received through the engagement process relates to the alternatives where there could be a time limit. So for those property owners who are dealing with a economic downturn or a difficult situation with a neighborhood or community, you could time limit them to one year or two, two consecutive years of eligibility. So there's ways of, of providing that potential relief. Some of the issues that staff identified with those alternatives is administrative. Administratively, it would be more burdensome than the current program. The current program simply is someone who puts forward an application, it's reviewed, considered, and typically they are recipients of it. Creating a more of a targeted would likely create some administrative, additional administrative responsibilities.
Okay. Appreciate that. And I, I do recall that the, the original kind of thrust of this was to avoid, you know, kind of demolition by neglect, right? Those, those property owners that have no intention of developing, just want to sit on it, let the property appreciate somewhere to park their money and don't want to bother with, I think that was the intent of doing this. So I think the intention is exactly right. I just, I just worry about unintended consequences for some of those that have every intention to do that, but may not be, maybe challenged in some areas. You know, and, and, you know, some of the challenging areas would be Barton Street right now, I would think. You know, that would be a, I mean, we'd be delighted if people were, were to invest there and that, that will likely happen in time and is happening, but may not have the same pace as, as, as what's happening in other places. So I just want to raise that as a concern. But I fully support this. I think we want to inspire people to not only make the investment, but do the improvements and get fully tentative. That, that's the objective and certainly this will help inspire that, I think. Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would just suggest if the recommendations are approved, economic development staff may come back through the 2018 budget process as it relates to some of these, whether they're BIAs or some of these other nodes or corridors, there could be some additional investments targeted to help those property owners. And the one that comes to mind is the facade program. So again, there may be an additional investment by the city as it relates to the facade program if this results in some of the property owners more actively. if this results in some of the property owners more actively looking at redeveloping their properties.
So just to follow on that, I mean, I think that that would be a positive step, in fact, and I know Councillor Marula has a motion coming on affordable housing, I believe, which is not a bad objective, but I, you know what, there may be, you know, ways that we can also consider using some of these saved monies for, you know, inspiring, you know, additional investments where they otherwise might not occur. So I'd want to have a look at having staff come back with some thoughts and ideas about how can we inspire, whether it be affordable housing or commercial properties that are derelict and need attention, whether we can help inspire that more than we are today, that'll be a worthy thing to have a look at, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marula for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of things. Firstly, on the motion itself, the intent is to actually initiate development. So any developer throughout the city that is going to focus in on developing their residential development, that through inclusionary, whether it be 5% or 10%, that there be some sort of trigger that taps into the incentive for that development. For every dollar that's spent in incentives, we're getting assessment goals of return, which is better than just simply a one-time savings to taxpayer of $3 a year. So that's important to realize because if you do it one time and give the taxpayer $3 savings per household, it doesn't go very far. But if you spend that money and get a return on an investment through assessment growth, it's perpetually saving us in the future. So that's number one. It's just basic principles of business. Secondly, with respect to some of the subs, and I agree with what Councillor Skelly is emphasizing, and the issue surrounding the tenants is more of a concern to me than the owners. When you look at Cadillac Fairview as an example, they're worth $29 billion net owned by the Teachers' Federation, and they're worth $176 billion net. I'm in no way going to buy into subsidizing them. I will, however, if there's a mom and pop in Lime Ridge Mall shop that I want to be able to assist, I'd be more than willing to do so. But through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Mike, with respect to that, are we in a position to be able to assist the tenant and not necessarily the property owner?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, my understanding is it has to be targeted to the property owner as it relates to a property. If it is, if that's incorrect, we would report back in terms of additional flexibility. But my understanding, again, it is property owner. And the reason that's my understanding is we've had some challenges with respect to shopping as well as storage facilities who are utilizing this tool to try to reduce their overall contribution in property taxes.
So I can't buy into Mr. and Mrs. Smith on Ray Street North subsidizing this $176 billion entity. That's just a nonstarter. Secondly, if we could focus in on a small business and a housing development, that would be key for our return on investment. The other component, the LRT suggestion, again, is a nonstarter, and I'll explain why. Again, if there's a way we can help the tenants along that route because they're going to be the most affected, then I'm all in for it. But again, that would be bonusing and illegal because the biggest benefactors of that entire project at the end of the day will be those property owners. So in essence, their benefit will come at the end of that cycle, and I'm not buying into subsidizing them either because they're going to have a windfall at the end of it all. So at the appropriate time, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll move the motion for the validity study, and we'll go from there.
Councillor Skelly for a second time.
Mike, one question through the chair. The impact reassessment of a property after part of it or it becomes vacant takes how long? Is there an assessment, is there an annual assessment?
Yeah.
And does the reduction apply immediately?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm not an expert in terms of impact methodology. I believe they take a three-year average. There's some average in terms of what that property's owner's experience has been with respect to vacancy and some, again, it's a question better directed to impact, but I believe it's based on a multi-year experience.
Thank you. And just a comment, if I may, Mr. Chair, and it's along the line of Councillor Conley's, and I am concerned about spending money we haven't even yet raised and/or saved. And I won't be supporting the motion on redirecting this fund or our potential savings already to housing, especially in light of the fact that we've already spent $50 million on housing, so.
Okay, Councillor Johnson for a second time.
Yep, thank you. And through you too, Mike, I'm hearing that there's no incentives for social, not social housing, pardon me, nonprofit housing. It's my understanding, because I'm working with a couple of developers right now who are implementing this, there's, my understanding is there is an incentive to build these because of DC reductions and Parkland reductions and all that. Could you explain that further, please?
And so through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's a great question, and that's why I appreciate the time and opportunity to report back. What we're seeing is with the focus from all levels of government towards affordable and social housing is the potential for some higher-than-historic activity as it relates to those projects. The city's bylaw, DC bylaw identifies, I believe it's a 50% exemption for those projects that receive or are able to leverage funding, significant funding from higher levels of government. My concern is those costs, that discretionary exemption, that relief is borne by existing property owners.
Okay.
And if we see uplift in that activity, that would represent a levy pressure in those years.
As well.
And so the opportunity to report back might include reference to what that potential pressure would be in 2018, 19, future years in terms of levy. And some of this potential savings could help to mitigate or relieve some of that pressure on existing. So if you recognize that if affordable project, affordable housing projects receives funding from, leverages funding from senior levels of government, it is eligible for a 50% development charge exemption, that must be borne by existing property owners funded through the levy. If we're seeing higher-than-historic activity, that would represent a budget pressure for us because we would have to adjust our budget, our levy, to reflect that additional revenue that we would have to make up. So recognizing development charges go towards servicing. That servicing continues to have to be supported. If we are diverting some of that revenue potential away from development charges, we have to make it up through the levy. And so my point being, the time to report back would give us some opportunity to assess how the development activity as it relates to affordable or social housing may impact the levy and the potential of, for instance, applying some of this potential savings to mitigate that pressure.
Okay, thank you. And I'm fully in support of affordable housing, but my understanding, just to be clear, that the DC reduction is there, it's available. Parkland reduction is there, it's available. Even though it's a pressure on the tax levy, it's still there and it's still available. So there is that incentive to do that 5%, 10%. There is that incentive if they're looking at getting some DC reductions. So there is some programming already out there that's providing a pressure on the levy, but it's still to incite the developer to do the right thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pearson for a first time.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. First and foremost, Mike, thank you so much for the thorough answers and information and, you know, it's, I know we've heard it before, but it's always refreshing to have that come back to us. I want to ask one question just through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Mike. When somebody applies, and there's been a comment of supporting this over this, somebody applies, we can't differentiate between a mom-and-pop business to a large mall, is that correct?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, under the current program, we cannot target it to a subclass. So we can't target this to a shopping center versus a small storefront facade. That is not an option. Going forward, the reference to flexibility is I expect municipalities will have that option, but what I'm seeing for the most part is municipalities are applying this to mitigate future levy impacts.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And certainly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, listening to the comments around the table today, I stand by staff's recommendation. I won't support pigeonholing this into one specific area right now without the review coming back because I know come 2018 budget deliberations, there's going to be a lot more things on the table that we're going to have to seriously be looking at. So I stand by staff's recommendations. Thank you.
I have no further speakers on my list at this point, not that I'm trolling for additional ones, but I am asking for a mover and a seconder on the report.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councillor Marula and seconded by Councillor Green to get 7.1 on the table. And then, Councillor Marula, you have an amendment to that?
That's correct. And it's a...
Madam Clerk, before the councillor speaks.
May we also, Mr. Deputy Mayor, may we also have a motion to receive the presentation, please?
Yes, we'll do that. Motion to receive Mike's presentation. Moved and seconded all in favor, Kerryce, thank you. Councillor Marula.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself, so going to by Councillor Green that staff be directed to review the feasibility of creating a citywide affordable housing incentive program utilizing the 1.25 million property taxes recovered from the vacant unit rebate and report back to General Issues Committee during the 2018 operating budget. And this in no way takes away from what the staff is already going to do, it just highlights this as a priority. And again, to, just to emphasize, the clarity surrounding this issue is very clear. At present, if I develop an apartment building and I put in, or I voluntarily designate 5% of affordable housing, there's no incentive available, absolutely no incentives available. You have to officially be an affordable housing scenario. The inclusionary zoning, which is separate from that, and so through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Mike, there was some mention about there already being an incentive program, but that's not universally throughout the city. If somebody voluntarily incorporates a 5% affordable housing component into a development, can you elaborate on that?
Mike, on the affordable housing incentives that we have?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what I had referenced was in their development charge bylaw is affordable housing projects that leverage funding from senior levels of government are eligible, I believe, for a 50% exemption on the development charges. That's the program that is...
That's the distinction. Those that are already receiving money from either the province or the federal government can now tap into the incentives. But if a developer wants to be part of the solution of the challenge that we're faced with and voluntarily applies the inclusionary zoning and decides to voluntarily have 5% or 10% or 20% or 30% affordable housing, there is absolutely nothing available for an incentive. So let's just clarify that. So if people are using that as justification and not support that, they're doing so under false pretense. Secondly, it's important to recognize that we could, as a municipality, mandate, mandate that percentage, that inclusionary zoning, but we haven't. So I personally believe that we're going to solve the affordable housing crisis not on the tax dollar, but that of the private sector dollar, and we need them to feel comfortable investing in this type of investment. And the only way you do that is to provide those incentives. So if you want to be part of the solution, this is something that could play a very small role, but a role in bringing more developers into the equation to solve what is going to become more of a challenge in the future. And keep in mind that in the wording, it's citywide. And when you say affordable housing, you know, it's not low-income housing any longer, as everyone knows, because the average person in the city, particularly those graduating from university, cannot afford to buy a home in the city anymore. So this, with a lens to the future, can play a huge role in having the development company, developers become sensitized to basically provide an investment which will become part of the solution down the road. So again, I hope that clarifies any confusion that may have existed, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Councillor Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I took my name off the second time speaker's list because I realized that I spoke too much during the presentation, didn't ask enough questions. So here we are in comments. I support this motion for different reasons stated by the previous speaker. I think that the housing crisis will not be solved by the private sector. The housing crisis in this country fundamentally is a responsibility of government for every Canadian to have a dignified, affordable place to live. Having said that, at the municipal level, we have various tools available to us. These incentives are part of a bigger package that will help alleviate the housing pressures that I spoke of. I want to remind folks that are, that suddenly are fiscally conservative again, that we were around this table last year at budget time with a $3 million surplus for the police budget that we reallocated to a $25 million police central station. So we make decisions around this table that identify our priorities. For myself, my number one priority is housing, full stop. There are vulnerable people in this city that are a kilometer from here, living in encampments along the escarpment, and if you were to go down to the tracks and take a trip along the rail, you would see people living in conditions that would rival a refugee camp in the world, or worse, in some cases, based on addictions and other scenarios that are prevalent here in Hamilton. So I support this, and I support our continued commitment to housing. And I remind people that $50 million is over 10 years, it's $5 million a year. And I remind them that we, in fact, have 6,000 people on the subsidized housing list. So again, you know, the idea that the private sector will solve this problem, I don't believe in a benevolent private sector, but I do think government has a role to play in alleviating the housing market and at our level of government. This is where we can help contribute with taxation. The idea of giving subsidies to shopping malls is ludicrous. I mean, if you look at the cost and the impacts that they have, even if we were to start to unpack the costs of things like stormwater management and the increased deferrals of those responsibilities onto the residential tax base is appalling. Lime Ridge Mall, you know, has 805,661 square feet of rentable retail space that they currently state is going at about $569 per square foot. That's $4,584,211,109 annually in revenue they have. So the idea of subsidizing them because they lost a target is absurd. I'm not on for subsidizing big business. I'm certainly on for the mom and pops and finding supports that we can do for small businesses. And even more so, having, you know, gone through the Barton-Kennelworth corridor study, will identify that there are people along that stretch who are hoarding land. They're buying properties and literally they're buying them on tax sales. As I can think of Hendry's, I know, I looked at it myself. They bought it on a tax arrears or on a default mortgage for 180K by the time I was looking at it. The real estate people, the next day, put it back on the market for like 600,000 without doing a thing. And it's now gone on to have multiple owners since. But the point is for us to stimulate or to subsidize land hoarding and speculation is just bad economics. So let's remove this incentive or this disincentive for redevelopment and then have the conversation around where we prioritize. I believe this council continually prioritizes housing and recognizes that. But let's not kid ourselves. We had an opportunity with the police budget where they had the $3 million that was surplus that got reallocated to a $25 million building that we were supposed to be one-third on the hook for. I bring it up because it's pertinent. We made that decision, and I'll continue to remind us that we make those priorities at this table. Thank you.
Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I just want to remind everyone that what the motion is about is asking staff to report back. It's not about making the decision right now, it is about doing due diligence, doing a review, doing an analysis, and bringing it back during the 2018 budget process. It is not about making the decision. I support it 100%. Staff are going to report back, we're going to have all the information in front of us, we're going to be able to make a decision at that time. So, you know, let's not make it more than what it is. It's just to do the analysis, the review, and report back. Thank you, and I support it.
Very well said. Councillor Farrar, you're next.
Mr. Chair, I don't know whether you're championing the bit to say a few words yourself on this topic you know so well, or whether you're just eager for me to pre-sede down what I'm about to say. Probably the latter, so I've scripted it. We've been together on addressing the crisis of affordable housing, and we've been taking your lead for many years now. West Harbour Subcommittee just the other day, as you know, and others who sit on that committee, as an example, just one example, agreed to, in our system and the RFP process on the pure eight lands, we have a point system through the RFP, and we agreed that there should be bonus points for would-be developers who go above and beyond the already council-approved 5% of affordable housing. Obviously, as referenced, the 50 million over 10 years and other outside-the-box and creative ways to go about tackling what is, of course, a crisis and important to what appears in past votes to be a very big priority for all of us. So I have one example on Main Street, just to speak to the feasibility motion that I greatly supported before us. the feasibility motion that I greatly supported before us. And we actually, and I think, Steph, you could probably offer the date, but maybe our next GIC, where we have a delegate coming before us who wants to build an as-of-right tower of what he dubs quality affordable housing. And directly to the motion before us, there is no fund, there's no template to encourage that kind of private development. But this particular individual, who literally should be in tights and a cape for the concept that he's been putting forward, and I really have talked to him many times, and many times with many staff over a few years now, BIAs too, I'm still trying to get clear on what his performance is. But certainly, you know, from finance to housing, Dave, or Joe, or whomever, we're trying to get there. And this, if through feasibility became reality over time through the budget process, would be very helpful to that particular project and quite obviously others. So we want to encourage that kind of investment. It's great that this motion is here. And through you, to Stephanie, I bet you she has the date.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I believe the gentleman you're referring to is actually going before Emergency and Community Services to discuss the affordable housing.
In the coming weeks.
And it's possibly next week, so I will confirm the date before the end of the meeting.
I appreciate that, and I encourage all councillors, not just the ones who sit on that standing committee, to join in. And I thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you. Councillor Marula, you want to read it out again on your amendment, which is going to form Part D, if it passes as part of 7.1?
Sure. And I'll have a standing recorded vote. So it's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Green, that staff be directed to review the feasibility of creating a citywide affordable housing incentive program utilizing the 1.25 million dollar property taxes recovered from the vacant unit rebate and report back to the General Issues Committee during the 2018 operating budget process.
Okay. On that, you've heard the motion, a mover and a seconder on that? Councillor Ferguson?
Just so I'm, I'm sorry I walked in late, I had a support troops event this morning in Central Police Station. And, but just so I'm clear, this is in addition to the 50 million we've already allocated to housing, which is 5 million a year over 10 years.
Correct. He's asking for an information report during the budget process.
I just, my only comment is, I'm struggling with this, because whenever we get some new money, we seem to spend it instantly. With the hydro dividend on that 50 million dollars, now we're doing it here. And I know it's a report back, which is fine, but it sends a message to staff that we're keen on, I think. So I just have some concerns that we've already allocated 50 million bucks, and to reallocate another.
Councillor Jackson?
Well, you don't have to look skyward just when I tap my glass, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but all I was asking, Mr. Deputy Mayor, was so B will stand as is, which is then global, and then the D part will say, well, here's a priority we're considering. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome. Standing recorded vote, all those in favor of the amendment, please stand. Steph, do you need me to read them out, or are you okay?
Okay, right now, we want to read them out through the record, so they can hear them and take them.
Yeah. Councillors Johnson, Aiden Johnson, councillor Farr, councillor Green, councillor Marula, councillor Jackson, I'm standing as well, councillor Collins, Mayor Eisenberger, councillor Partridge. All those opposed, please stand. Councillors Conley, Pearson, Brenda Johnson, councillor Ferguson, councillor Skelly.
Kerry's 8.5.
Kerry's 8.5. On the main motion then, as amended, on 7.1, all those in favor?
Kerry's.
Kerry's. Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you very much. I needed then a motion to receive 7.1A, which is correspondence on the same issue. Moved to receive councillor Farr, seconded by councillor Skelly. Councillor Skelly, did you want to speak to that, or are you seconding it? Just seconding it? All those in favor?
Kerry's.
Kerry's. Thank you. Onto discussion items now. 8.1 is the lobbyist registry bylaw. It's here in front of you. On that, councillor Pearson. Moved by councillor Pearson, seconded by, question, councillor Brenda Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, through you to Lisa or Christopher. One of the things that I noticed, especially on page three or four, the subject matter categories, a large percentage of the lobbyists are coming from the planning and economic development. So it's my understanding that planners, professional planners, are not able to register as a lobbyist, because it goes against their certification. And it says in our bylaw that residents are excluded. But unfortunately, developers own land throughout our wards, so are they considered exempted from this registry because they own land in our wards?
Through the chair, I believe there's two separate kind of questions in there that you asked. So with the first part of planners, we see no reason why they wouldn't be able to register if they feel that it goes against some type of code they've accepted. It doesn't really reflect in the bylaw, there's no real reason why they wouldn't, especially when they're acting in that capacity. But with respect to the latter, if an individual does own land within your ward, they are considered a constituent under the bylaw or in the definitions. So that would be correct. And the people they hire to work for them or to represent them would also be granted that.
So it's not limited to whether or not they reside in our wards, it's just open-ended. So theoretically, just to give you some context, every developer out there already owns the land, and that's why they're coming in to develop it. They wouldn't be developing on land they don't own. So therefore now, they're theoretically considered a resident because they own the very land that they want to develop. So have we looked at other municipalities on how they have distinguished the two, if in fact they have distinguished the two, whether or not it's just quote-unquote a landowner who wants to develop, or a resident who's coming in to talk about a variety of issues?
With respect to, I hope I'm answering the question correctly through the chair, a landowner or a business, they'd be covered in the definition to the bylaw under a constituent. So essentially, because they're a tax-paying entity within the organization, within your ward, they would be granted that ability to speak to any councillor in which they do business in the ward. But if they were ideally prospecting in another area of the city where they haven't purchased, and they wanted to speak to a councillor and/or senior member of our senior management team, they would have to then register that occurrence. With respect to other municipalities, I wouldn't be able to speak fluently about how they handle such matters at this point.
Okay. So, thank you. So through you, Deputy Mayor, at this time, I would really like to ask staff to just, you know, casually go out and look at other municipalities on how they're handling this situation. Because just for the record, I don't talk to developers unless they do register as a lobbyist, because to me, that's, I thought, and maybe my perception was wrong, was that the lobbyist registry was, in fact, created because there seems to be this perception out there that there's lobbying going on, and it includes a big portion of an industry. And I'm not saying that it does happen, but I think that's the perception. So I would just like to know if we can direct Christopher, please, to just look at other municipalities on whether our wording is consistent and what they're doing to mitigate it.
Chris, through the chair, no issue at all with that?
Thank you very much. So directed.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And Christopher, on page four of four, I found this quite interesting, actually, that it does talk about other municipalities that have since taken the lead from Hamilton and also established the lobbyist registry. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to those municipalities for me, please?
In generalities, yes, I can speak to them. So we were the third in the province to initiate a lobbyist registry, second to do so on our own fruition. City of Toronto's mandated, as the report indicates. But City of Brampton, Peel Region, and Vaughan have all enacted lobbyist registries. They have all borrowed heavily from the framework in which this council, previous councils have worked to establish. So Brampton, they've been established and up and running since January 1st, 2016. Peel has been March 1st, 2017. And Vaughan, right now, they're under their first year. They are an optional lobbyist registry to be mandatory in 2019, come January.
Okay, and thank you for that. I just, I found that, you know, quite interesting that we like to put a lot of firsts under our belt, and, you know, I think we should be proud of that. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I have no further speakers on the list, then councillor Green.
Thank you. Something I've been keenly watching, and I know when it first rolled out. So given the report, I know you have the directions and report back, but from your own opinion, where could we do better in terms of tightening up the transparency and accountability? Because it still feels like, in a lot of ways, there are some gaps in how this is operating. And I'm just wondering, like, what would be the best-case scenario in the most clear and transparent way? Looking at upper levels of government, basically, anybody who does business has to register? That's not necessarily the case here.
Well, as a staff member, who, council was the one who dictated the bylaw, I don't think I'd be really the one to be equipped to answer that question. That's a question, really, that council has to ask itself. I think I've provided the information about where council stands, in the sense that this is a model right now. We've actively chosen to take this on, so I have no other further comments with respect to...
Okay. I can appreciate that. So I guess I'll ask the question in the following. What would stop us from creating a mandated program that just had everybody doing business, just check in, like, to do at upper levels of government? Could you comment, based on your understanding of this area of administration, the difference between, say, the federal lobbyist registry and the municipal lobbyist registry?
Well, a big piece of the pie for us is that the Municipal Act doesn't define a lot of the aspects, so our council was, and through accountability and transparency, was asked to define those matters. So essentially, the overarching legislation is by and large left to council, whereas those mandates are more strictly enacted in the federal and provincial sense.
Are there any other jurisdictions in any other provinces that have tighter regulations?
Through the chair, I would not be able to answer that accurately, due to the research that I've done.
Okay. So the reason why is because it appeared to me, and I know when this came, I think, to the Governance Subcommittee quite some time ago, we had a review, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council, if it was a resident, if it was somebody inside your ward, if you contacted them. There's a whole list of different kind of loopholes that keep people off the registry. And I have an interest of just openness and transparency in an open government way, to try to find the best possible case scenario where, if you're doing, it's not a bad word, being a lobbyist is not a bad word. But as I understand at Parliament, and this is to my own knowledge, so I'm not asking staff to collaborate this, if you go in and have lunch with somebody, or you sign in, they know the date, they know who's there, and then the loopholes, in theory, are closed, unless it's a big fundraiser, and then you're doing something else. But, you know, those are my concerns around this, is that even though we're being used as a pilot from other municipalities, I feel like we've created a low watermark for transparency and accountability as it relates to lobbying. And I would go further to state that, or ask the question, just to be clear, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, for staff, when they leave the corporation, what's their cool-off period before they can come back and lobby? Just right?
I can confirm this. I think it's a year.
Is it a year or two?
I'll confirm. I thought it was 12 months, but it could be long.
Because for me, inherent in the culture of lobbying, and I respect people who want to retire and go on and do, you know, use their expertise, I don't begrudge them for that, but I feel like they have an undue opportunity and influence and relationships to be able to retire and to come back into the corporation and lobby people that they may have been supervisors to, mentors for, so on and so forth. And what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I would even go further to say, I would be up for a cooling-off period of members of council, that when you leave this council, that we go ahead and take a two-year cooling-off period, or a terms cooling-off period, so we don't see, you know, former mayors and other folks in the back chambers lobbying us for corporate interests that they were deciding on in their previous terms of council. So I'm seeing some heads. I'd like to actually move that motion, that we extend the cooling-off period to members of council, to a two-year term, I think is fair. I would like to see it be four years, but to a two-year term after leaving council, that you not come back and be a lobbyist.
Right now, as a motion?
Well, it's attached to the report, so at the appropriate time, Mr. Chair, Mr. Deputy Mayor, whatever you think makes sense.
I'll come back to you. Yep. Councillor Pearson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you. And I do recall, as Mr. Murray said, that there is some, we did implement some restrictions. And I really like to have that information come back, because I believe there were restrictions for staff and for councillors that were implemented about a year and a half ago, if I remember correctly, maybe even longer. So I would really like to have that information come back, because I can't remember exactly the timeline, but I do know that there are restrictions in there. Can I just, could we ask staff to bring that information forward?
I can tell you, you know, within a month of being inaugurated here for orientation, we had previous councillors in here lobbying on issues.
Question was, would you delay your motion?
Oh, sure. Yeah, no, absolutely happy for a report back. No problem. Let's get the fullness of the, because we may be able, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in that space, to tighten it up. So if we come back and it's only a year, maybe we look to extend it. If there's nothing for council, maybe we talk about two years or four years. So I'm down with that. Thank you for the amending motion, or maybe I'll just move it as a notice of motion, or Steph?
I can come back to you at the end of the meeting. So this is an information report that we have in front of us, but nothing prevents you from putting that. And we can provide the appropriate direction, as councillor Pearson has asked for that detailed information to come back in terms of the cooling-off period. So on the information report, I think councillor Pearson, you had asked earlier to move it, seconded by councillor Ferguson. All those in favor, that Kerry's, thank you. Moving on to 8.3, which is the BIA Advisory Committee report on... Sorry?
Sorry, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just to clarify, because the lobbyist registry bylaw mandated a two-year review, we would like to get some direction from committee on the intent of that. Do you consider the review to be completed, barring this return of this information that you've asked for? We would just want to clarify that.
So moved by Farr. Councillor Green?
That doesn't preclude us from bringing forward motions to governance committee or others to tighten up some of the aspects that we might find being a little bit loose in the loopholes, the various loopholes that are present.
Rose, nothing prevents amendments to at a later date, as has been requested for that information. Yeah. So the answer is, nothing prevents us. So moved and seconded then, councillor Farr. All those in favor? Kerry's, thank you. On 8.3, the Business Improvement Area Advisory Committee, moved by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Jackson. All those in favor? Kerry's, thank you. 8.4 is a report on accommodation at 50 Main Street East, floors three to five. Questions or comments? Councillor Pearson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, I'll move this. And actually, reading the report, I'm pleased to see that, you know, it's better to do the work now while they're in there than to try and go back and do it later, because that always costs a lot more money. And I see staff are just coming in now that they can clarify. And I'm really pleased to see the additional departments that will be transferred over to the facility. I think it's a great fit. And I certainly move it at the appropriate time.
On eight, four, it's been moved. A seconder on that, councillor Farr. All those in favor? Kerry's, thank you. Eight, five is the waterfront outdoor rink management agreement, moved by councillor Jackson, seconded by councillor Johnson. All those in favor? On that, councillor Green?
Just for, this is just for general information. There's been lots of online chatter around the conditions that some of the volunteer DJs who do the roller skating down at the waterfront at the rink, there's some consternation around that. And I know we have lots of conversations around minimum wage, living wage, folks that have been volunteers there for some time. I just would like to ask that some consideration, or maybe a dialogue be opened up with the folks who are down there volunteering their time.
Councillor Farr?
Yep.
That on the agenda of our next waterfront trust meeting?
Okay. Thank you for that.
Invite or update Mr. Green accordingly.
All right. On the motion that was moved and seconded, all those in favor? Kerry's, thank you. Onto item nine, 9.1, is a motion regarding the expression of interest for a professional soccer league at City's Tim Horton Stadium. Councillor Partridge, do you wish to introduce your motion today?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I will be tabling the motion at this time until a future consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that then. Madam Clerk, how would you, we're just going to leave it, and she can lift it at the appropriate time, is that correct?
I need a mover, a seconder for the tabling motion.
So it's seconded by councillor Johnson then. All those in favor? Kerry's, thank you. Notices of motion today? I think I had a couple. I'll go back to councillor Farr.
Yes, thank you. And moved by, both by myself for now, because there are notices. Development incentive programs offered in the city, that staff be directed to prepare a comprehensive report respecting the development incentive programs offered by the City of Hamilton, and report to the General Issues Committee prior to the 2018 operating budget process. That's number one. And number two, also a notice, review of the downtown and community renewal improvement program, that staff be directed to review the downtown and community renewal improvement program and report back to the General Issues Committee prior to the 2019 operating budget process.
You're going to leave those as notices today? Okay, thank you. Councillor Green?
This is actually a notice, because it's related to this. It's just that staff report back on the current policies as it relates to cooling-off periods for both retired and city councillors. And then do I put a notice of motion that I would like to move for the cooling-off period of councillors, or do I just add that in there?
Madam Clerk, how would you... Madam Clerk, how would you like to treat that?
Through, Mr. Deputy Mayor, you can verbally add it all together, and then I will adjust it accordingly.
Thank you, yes, so, okay, so, so the, the motion stands that you've heard, that the, the staff report back on, and that consideration be given to a two-year cooling-off period of all elected officials after they leave council.
And are you keeping yours as a notice, or would you like to bump that up? So we're going to move to waive the rules in order to allow that motion, moved by Conley, seconded by Johnson, all those in favor, carries, thank you. Now, under motions then, it's been moved and seconded, you've heard the request for information, Counselor Ferguson?
Can we have referred to governance, can run it through the normal process, governance, up to administration, up to?
He's, it looks like he prefers it to come back to GIC. So you prefer it to come back to GIC?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've heard the motion for the information report to come back to GIC, all those in favor?
Carries.
Any opposed? Counselor Ferguson opposed, okay, thank you. Moving on, any other notices of motion or motions at this point in time?
Eleven, eleven-one on today's agenda, I believe.
Yeah, I was just coming to that right now.
Oh, sorry about that.
So on, on 11.1, you want to move?
Just the therefore is fine, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's a follow-up, that the matter respecting the promoting of the Royal Botanical Gardens be removed from the General Issues Committee Outstanding Business List, and very briefly, thank you very much to both the RBG and Horticultural staff who do both incredible work in our fine city and in Burlington, when you consider the RBG, and the matter is now closed if we accept this here today.
Your secondary is for that, Counselor Green?
Counselor Green, I guess.
All those in favor on that?
Carries.
Carries, thank you. Any opposed? Nope. And then I need a motion to approve the amendments to the Outstanding Business List as shown before you, you see all the amended dates there, Counselor Johnson? Moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Pearson, all those in favor, that carries, thank you. Moving on to item, Counselor Johnson?
Just to be clear, on the second page, three of, four of five in the agenda, it's I, is Akmar Estate Operations Plan Long-Term Lease Operating and Management Agreement. We just agreed to extend that, so should that not be removed?
Our previous decision will overrule what was presented there.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, okay, moving on then to private and confidential, I need a motion to approve the May 17th and April 6th closed session minutes as presented, moved by Counselor Partridge, seconded by Counselor Conley, all those in favor, that carries. And now I need a motion to move into closed session respecting item 12.3 is an OPSU bargaining ratification update, item 12.4 is report PW17042, the acquisition of property, King William Street, and item 12.5, which is an update respecting a personnel matter pursuant to section 8.1, subsections B, C, and D of the City's procedural bylaw 14300, and section 239-2, subsections B, C, and D of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended, as the subject matters pertain to personnel matters and an identified individual, including city employees, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for city purposes and labor relations or employee negotiations. I now ask the public to, and staff who are not required to be in closed session on one or more of these items, to please exit the chambers, taking all your personal belongings with you. The members of the public will be invited back into the council chambers once the frosting has been removed from the windows and the elimination of white noise in the lobby. On that motion, moved by Jackson, seconded by Green, all those in favor, carry.